Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I will call to order the December 2nd meeting of the Slene County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Grievous?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
And Commissioner Hay?
Here.
If you're able to stand, please do so and join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into our citizens' impulsion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who'd wish to address the commission? And please state your name and address.
I'm Lucille Sanderson, Salina, Kansas. Yes, I was here last week and I spoke directly to Monty. I understand I may be incorrect on this, but nobody would take the position that was going to be left empty. So he said, put my name on the list and he got the job. But here's the problem. He's not really doing what he was elected to do. He's talked to me when we were spreading back there, but I did not choose at that time to discuss anything, Monty. If you didn't want to be on the commission, why did you let your name be put on there? Is it because of the $19,000 you get for a year plus the insurance?
I'm going to interrupt you. Just, I know, Mr. Chair, that we're not supposed to speak during public meetings, but I don't take a salary. I donate that money. Just to make sure you know of that. So, no, it was not because of that.
All I know is when I got on a website, that is what they said the check was. About two years ago, the mayor of New Cambria asked you to attend one of their city meetings. You did not have the courtesy to call back and say, I can't attend it. You had your, per se, he used the word secretary, call, saying you were too busy running your business. And you told me there you don't remember it.
I don't.
Okay, this is something else that was brought up. You were asked to check the roads in your district for Solomon School District on the condition of the roads. You never got back to the man? Nothing was ever done? You know, I just don't understand why your business, Blue Sky, is more important to you than what you were elected to cover. And I realize the railroad will not be an easy project, but get in there, work on it, and it can be. And if you have a commissioner that's not doing what is asked for in his district, if every one of the commissioners doing the same thing, I pity Saline County.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
I will let that go, Monty, but I'm sorry that I pointed out to you, but I don't hear anything from the other commissioners. And I live in your district.
I understand.
And those are two things that were brought up to me that you failed to do. You failed. They asked for help. They talked to you about, talked to somebody about it, but nothing was ever done. You know New Cambria floods. All they would like to have is you grade the ditch. The ditch at the south end, a shipple, is higher than New Cambria. So how in the heck is water going to drain away when that is higher? Somebody was addressed and it was never done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, at this time, golly, I got any other comments or anything? Okay.
Consent.
That got me.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Yeah, I know. That is, that got me going there. So, at this time, we'll move into our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of payroll, and...
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All object? Nope? Okay, motion carries. We will move into action items.
First action item is Community Solutions, Inc. Agreement for Services. Michelle Callum, Community Corrections Director.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here today with an RFA. I'm asking for permission to sign a contract with a company known as Community Solutions Incorporated. They do quality assurance. The state of Kansas and Department of Corrections has a contract with them to offer this to our juvenile services across the state. KDOC is funding that. In an effort to keep my office congruent and on the same page, I have budgeted some money from this fiscal year and next fiscal year to cover the same services for my adult staff, my staff who supervise adult clients. They offer quality assurance in our assessments that we do, which is the LSCMI and the Warna. That's two different risk needs assessments that we use at Community Corrections. And they offer quality assurance on appointments and EPICs type things. So that, over the years, we've had a pretty strong quality assurance program within the agency. Commissioner Grievous can attest to that. We do a lot of quality assurance and file audits and that kind of thing. But I think this is, it gives us a leg up where we can have an agency come from the outside and audit those kinds of things. They also will offer, for my supervisory staff who audit my line staff, they will offer training in how to do quality assurance so that once we get through this two-year process, my supervisory staff can keep that going and take that on, and we can continue to do that internally. This is a program and a company that Reno County has contracted with for several years. So I've reached out to my counterpart, Randy Regir. I have a lot of respect for Randy. He's a really good director. So oftentimes, when I don't know what I'm doing, I turn to Randy and see what he's doing instead of trying to reinvent the wheel. So he's been using it for several years, I think with good success. The feedback is done by Zoom, so it doesn't require a lot of downtime for officers, but they will get that. Each year, they'll get 12 hours of coaching and feedback, so about an hour a month, just to help them increase their skills. And I think that, I think that what you practice helps you grow and you get better as time goes on. And we're really just kind of looking for progress, not perfection. I don't expect any of my staff to have skills that are perfect, but I think this helps to enhance it. So we also will be doing quality assurance with our cognitive groups, which is something that we haven't been able to do quite to the level that I would like to see. I have a cognitive group provider in my office, a program provider, and she's very good. But I think that we could use some quality assurance there to just to be sure that we continue to progress with our skill level. So alternatives for action is to approve the agreement for the services or to deny the request. Staff recommendation would be to approve the agreement with Community Solutions Incorporated. And the cost of these services would come from our Kansas Department of Corrections budget on the adult division. If you have any questions?
So it's a two-year contract?
Mm-hmm. It is a two-year contract, although there isn't out for 30, you know, we have a 30-day, we have the option to leave the contract with 30-day notice. We did receive our allocation letter yesterday, or our allocation planning information yesterday from KDOC, and we are flat funded again. In years past, I would have complained about that, but this year, I'm happy because we have until FY '28, which is July of 2027, until we would be looking at any cuts. So that gets us almost to the end of that contract. I have reimbursement dollars that I could supplement that with if I needed to.
And council has looked at that contract?
He has, yes. I submitted it to Mike Montoya for his approval.
I just find it interesting that DOC is going to fund the juvenile side for it, but won't see the value of it into the adult side. Where do our juveniles go to our adult side many times? So, once again, I'll just, big old plug out there for KDOC. I'm so grateful.
I don't understand the method to their madness, but I guess I'm just here for it.
You know, 35 years, I never got it either. So don't worry about it. No need to understand it. Thank you.
Every day's a new day with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other comments by the commission? Anyone from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, possible action.
I'd make a motion that we approve RFA 2025-169 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-169 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is meeting dates for 2026. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So this is our annual exercise in which we set the meeting dates for the succeeding calendar year pursuant to prior resolution of the commission, charter resolution, that's the word that was not coming to mind, where we substituted a different provision of state law for the provision that would normally govern Saline County. And this year, we went to a schedule of meeting three times per month in regular session. That was based on an analysis of how often we had items in the past. It seemed like when we met every week, there was just one week that was just nothing. And so this has worked, but we've still continued to have meetings. Today might be an example where it's a pretty light agenda. And so for 2026, you all discussed at work planning session last month, the possibility of trying a two-meetings-per-month regular schedule. That's obviously what the city of Salina has gone to. So the resolution before you, setting meeting dates for next year incorporates that two-meetings-per-month schedule. I've also included a calendar. The calendar's not official. It's not part of the resolution, but just for ease of seeing it all and planning. The county clerk did note to me yesterday that we will have to have one additional election canvas next year because the city is doing a special election regarding pit bull bans. So that is tentatively scheduled March 5th. So you can mark that on your calendars, but that's subject to approval by the Secretary of State's office. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the schedule or take any commission directions. Subject to that, would recommend approval of the motion, the resolution. There is no budget impact.
You know, I guess a little bit of explanation also is, you know, if we need to add another meeting in there, we can, we will add that other meeting. Another thing is, is the way I look at this is a lot of staff time, you know, this is for the public's information. A lot of the staff time that is put in to put in these meetings together, and if we have nothing for the agenda, then they spend time putting this together for really almost no reason at all. So going to this two meetings a month and with the option, if we need to have another meeting or a special meeting is there, I think it will ease, it will ease our staff here from having to work on that and actually save a little bit of taxpayer money.
And I will say, thank you for reminding me, Commissioner Hay. There is one feature in this year's resolution that was not in prior year's resolutions, which is a delegation of authority to this position. So that when you don't meet, we can go ahead and approve accounts payable. If there is a late fee or a discount that we could take advantage of, we could go ahead and send those checks out, and then you all would ratify that at your next regular meeting. And that's consistent with state law. And Mr. Montoya did approve that.
Okay. One other benefit, I think, is for the public themselves. They make their, they want to be available to make our meetings. It clears up their calendar also where they can, they can attend the meetings and not have to be here as often. Okay, any other comments? Anyone from the public?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We adopt Resolution 25-2439 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 25-2439 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item?
Next item is Office Specialist Intermittent, Rosie Walter, Department of Senior Service Director.
Morning, Rosie.
Morning, Rosie.
Good morning. Over the past seven years, we have used a program, SER. I think some of you are familiar with it. It's under the Senior Community Services Employment Program, and they have helped us in the office with reception duties and just general cleaning. And the SER program has really diminished over the last seven years. So right now, they were on a hold since July. So we have not had any SER help since July of 2025. And they've cut their hours from 25 clear down to 11. They're anticipating to restart the program November, December of this year. And we did get a phone call, so we have two SER workers that are coming back to the office. But that can change in a minute. In 2018, the county absorbed the Commission on Aging, and at that time, the average daily population was 313. We have, since the county took it over, it's raised to 507. So that's a 62% increase in seniors that use the county or the senior center. Currently, we have the same amount of staff, five staff, to run the building with that 62% increase. So that means that we're entering all the data entry, 62% more, and more people coming into the senior center. Right now, we do not have a receptionist. So with that, there's nobody sitting downstairs because staff are all doing data entry or doing their own jobs. So we are going to request two intermittent positions, one for the morning and one for the afternoon. And that will help with data entry. So they'll do a little bit more than what the SER workers do. So help with the data entry, help with the dining room, wiping tables, and just general cleaning. The center is very fortunate that we have donors that provide for services outside the budget. So we collect, we have $90,000 right now in our donations, but we collect an average of $10,754 a month. The cost of these two new positions, the intermittent positions, is $3,010. There's alternatives for action is to approve the two intermittent staff, approve one, or make a suggestion for an alternative. Staff recommendation is to approve the two intermittent positions, one to cover the morning and one to cover the afternoon. The budget impact, these positions will be funded through the donation with costs shared equally between meals and wheels and the senior service donation account. Continuation of the service will depend on ongoing donor support. If donations are insufficient, one or both positions will be vacated and remain unfilled until funding becomes available. Pursuant to county policy for intermittent positions, the estimated cost per year is as follows for salary and employment taxes. So using the 2026 pay scale for the county, under a grade nine, it's $16.68 per hour for a total of $16,664 at 999 hours. With taxes, that brings it to $18,058 for one position. For two, that brings it to $36,116. Because the positions are intermittent, they will be limited to no more than 999 hours per year and not be eligible for benefits such as paid leave, retirement, or insurance. These positions will receive an annual cost of living increase and will receive step increases for every 999 hours that they work. And I'll take any questions.
So you're going to use the donations that come in annually, and you have a trend right now that shows about $10,000?
Yes.
A month?
Yes.
And that would, you would use 30 some, $3,000 and some odd dollars to pay for both of them?
Correct.
Out of that each month?
And we do have currently 90,000 in donations.
Are you comfortable that you can find these individuals?
Yeah. You know, not wholeheartedly.
Yeah.
You know, offering a full-time position would definitely be more beneficial to them. And so, yeah, gonna try. I mean, I would definitely try.
Quick question is that, wouldn't know that if I wouldn't have just helped at the Thanksgiving luncheon though. But in being there, it's like, we are contracted to a company that is supposed to take care of the lunch, people working the lunch lines. Is that correct?
They work behind the bar, serving the food through the lunch, yes.
And preparing the food and all of that?
Yes, ordering the food, preparing.
I wasn't there, and I just want to say that's because I, one of the persons there said this happens all the time. But the main lady there that is in charge of that left. So you're sitting here asking us to subsidize for your people helping them out all the time back behind there, and so you're wanting us to subsidize?
I would say no.
Okay, well, that's why I wanted to ask. I mean, because...
I thought it was for reception and data entry.
But you're taking a person away from some duty out here and putting back there to help?
We have not helped in the kitchen for months.
Well, that's not what I was told. But okay, that's what I'm just, I just wanted to ask that question.
Now, should the event go where you are short and I was, had to, yeah, I would help, you know, just to keep the line running for our seniors. But it hasn't happened in months since it was addressed here with the county.
You know, we got, all of us received letters, I assume, and a couple of complaints. And one was the reception. There's nobody down there to, you know, welcome. And I'm not saying this because I'm disappointed with the work going on over there. I'm just saying that we've had constituents email or mail us about that. But the other one was about the food line. And I reached out to you both times and got the information, and you admitted that the reception is an issue, that there's not anybody down there. Hasn't been anybody down there for quite a while because, as you stated, you haven't replaced staff or...
SER workers.
And I'm not, the SER workers are great for what they're supposed to do, but they're not able to do what a full-time staff or a staff person would do as far as data entry. And they're a nice reception kind of thing. But so, yeah. So I understand everything you say, and I appreciated you getting back to me on both those concerns. And what you're saying today is exactly what you told me months ago or that time. So I believe that you need the help. I mean, there's not a question in my mind after being there, talking to you, and listening to the other people.
Thank you.
You know, Rosie, you know how I feel about the senior center. Got a great group of people over there. Enjoy walking around, talking to the folks there. Is the reason you decided that two part-time versus one full-time, is it because of the benefits? Is that what you were, I mean?
Yes, I would say that is a big part of it. Do I want a full-time? Yes.
But what's the difference between your two part-time, I mean, how much of a difference would it be getting a full-time person to take that?
Another $18,000, probably. Benefits are typically around 40% of salary, so add another 40% on top of...
Okay, that was my question on why, you know, why that, you know, it looks so, okay, that makes sense. As I said, you guys do a fantastic job over there. I'm like, Annie, I got my questions answered. I've come to you a couple of times with concerns. And, you know, I will tell you that in the, in the past, was not a big fan of the food. Lately, I tell you what, there's been a big turnaround. I think the food has really improved. The staff back behind there has got a good attitude. They did a fantastic job for the Thanksgiving. Really enjoyed being there and helping with that. And I think everybody was happy with it, so.
It's a fun job.
It's a fun job. Wouldn't want to do it full-time, but it was a fun job.
Personally, my thought process on the two-part time is, this is coming out of donation money. If it was a full-time position and you weren't able to fund it, you would lose it. With two of them, if you should have to back down, you could let one go and still have that other one in place. It's a good pilot, I think.
It's a good alternative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that the one thing that I do worry about is finding those people. I think Commissioner Shadwick brought it up, and I do worry about that, but that's not my problem, I guess. It's not going to be me. So I know that much. So I know, you know me.
This is kind of, this will be a little bit of a work in progress. I'm sure if you do have trouble, you're coming back here in a month, you know? I mean, if we decide okay today.
You're in a good position to find someone that might want some part-time help there too with all these retirees coming in. But I want to go back to the first item you talked about. What was that program that?
It's the SER program. It's a training program for seniors.
And who manages that? Who's that funded through?
It's a federally funded program. It's funded, I mean, it's the Senior Community Employment Program. So, I mean, they're out of Wichita, but yeah, it's a federally funded program.
And why did it stop?
They informed us that the money was not released to them. And I know that there's been a lot of issues with federal funding. So, but they actually stopped services in July, July 1st of 2025. So, and their explanation continually was, the funding's not been released to them. So, I don't know.
And now it's getting released again?
It was released to them now.
But it reduced from 20 some hours to 11.
Yeah, and from six SER workers, we now have two. So, yeah, and they'll cut their hours, and they cut their rate of pay.
So you're looking at a possible 22 hours a week?
I think right now, they said that they will allow 28 hours, which is phenomenal. But that can change in a day.
Per?
Per SER worker. It's probably...
So you're looking at 52 hours a week?
Yeah, if you have, yeah, when you have two of them.
If you can fill it.
Yeah.
And you've been able to fill that in the past?
No, I mean, yeah, I can't count on that. You know, just because they'll cut them in a week back down to 11 hours. So 11 hours doesn't really help me a whole lot. Right now, it's 28, and it's not so bad. But it's still, I definitely don't want to count on it. I would rather look for a permanent solution.
Correct. But you would use both of these?
Oh, I'm going to continue to use it, yeah.
And if you could have two people in over the serving period, which is two hours?
Well, you know, they're limited on their capabilities. I have one that actually can help, stand up and help, and I have one that cannot. She's chair-bound. She's chair-bound.
I just, I hate that we're piecemealing and doing this, but I, I understand, but I just.
And I get that, but I think this is a first step.
I know, it is a first step, and it's a, it's a solution that if it works, it works. If not, like I said, like Mr., or Commissioner Shadwick said, you'll be back in front of us, so. And if you don't, I would expect you to.
Do I have?
I'd like to just add a piece on the recruitment part of it. It's not a new concept. We actually have two intermittent positions out at the sheriff's office, and they've been in those positions quite a while, and two intermittent positions in the register of deeds office who've been in those positions quite a while. So sometimes we get the right fit. Somebody wants just those few hours, Monday through Friday. So sometimes we do have luck filling them.
Good, good.
And I just have a quick question here. Was this here part of a discussion during the budget season?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, okay, I did not appeal it. I requested it, but it, you know, was not funded, and I did not appeal it. Next year I will.
Okay. I just, that's, thank you. Any other comments?
So the motion is whether we decide to do one or two? Isn't that right?
Oh, that was in the option.
Yeah, one or two, or suggest an alternative.
I would like to do two if we're going to go for it and do it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Do you want to comment? Because I'm going to make a motion.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I was waiting, wait. Everybody got done here.
Okay.
Does, is there any comments by the public?
Okay, hearing none, I take a back-form motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve RFA 2025-171 as presented with two intermittent staff sought.
Second to motion. We have a motion for two to approve RFA 2025-171 as presented. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same time, aye. So, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to next. Informational items?
Commissioner comments?
I don't have any. Do you?
I, I forgot to say last week, but I did get to go, I was asked to go to the groundbreaking first line of Presbyterian Manor. They really did a nice job and a very, very good crowd there. And all the donors got to talk with large donors and everybody out there, and residents donated and spoke too. It was, it was a really, really nice event. And then I was interviewed by Cake or KSN, I don't know, was pulled over and asked some questions, and even though I hated the fact that they had me straight in the sun glaring, I did respond with the need that with our citizens living longer and want, being in our community, it's a beautiful opportunity. So I forgot to mention that.
Any other comments? Next.
Any announcements?
I'll just remind folks that next week is the Kansas Association of Counties' annual conference down in Wichita, so the commission will not be meeting next Tuesday.
Any other announcements? Move on to next item?
Next item is concept discussion, discussion of remaining commission contingency funds for 2025. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning. So the commission had previously asked if I could bring back something close to the end of the year regarding remaining commission contingency funding. As you know, the commission contingency is going away for 2026, but, so this is sort of our last opportunity to do something different. There was 20,000 budgeted for this year. From that, we've spent $1,500 for the team building session that we had at the beginning of the year. You all agreed to contribute $5,000 to the United Way for their food program, their SNAP back program. And you agreed to contribute up to $10,000 to Farm Bureau for their tire collection event. The final total, we finally got that bill, and the final total was 9488 and some change. So that brings the available balance in the commission contingency down to $4,011 for the remainder of this year. And in talking with staff, there are a few possibilities if you all wanted to invest in something by the end of the year. One idea is new iPads. The commission this year started receiving your agendas electronically rather than printing out a bunch of paper each week, and so we did that using repurposed iPads, ones that were on their way to being sold. And so the five of you got hand-me-downs, and a couple of them are not susceptible of being upgraded at this point and have some challenges. So getting one item, one idea for potentially spending the funding would be to get you five brand-new iPads as we go into next year. That would obviously be a long-term investment. They would last for five or six years. And the total on that would be approximately 2,500 out of that 4,000 that's available. Another idea is some software that would convert PDFs on our website into more searchable documents. Part of compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act is to update local government websites so that they can be read by folks who have either sight issues or hearing issues. And so PDFs are an interesting challenge in doing that. Not to get too in the weeds, but if you convert a PDF directly from a file like a Word file, it's generally capable of being read. But if you scan something in and create a PDF that way, it's, it comes in as really an image, and so a text reader can't pick up what it's saying. So there's software out there that would help us to do that, improve the ADA compliance on the website. That's about $1,800 as an alternative for that $4,000. One of the things that we had cut out of the, the budget for next year was membership in the local government network out of Wichita State. We could fund that, that's about $1,300. There are a couple of new chairs that are needed in the office. We could look at investing in, in some new chairs upstairs. And another item of, well, Rosie took off, but we've been having conversations with Rosie about the possibility of setting up a phone, it would be an AI-assisted phone answering service over at the Senior Center. So if folks called in with something that was sort of a routine quote, you know, what's for lunch today, it would answer that automatically rather than taking up staff time. And so we could invest funding in that. So those are just some items that staff came up with. Obviously, the commission might have other items, you might, or you might like something off of that list, or not want to spend the money at all. So it was just a discussion that you all wanted to have toward the end of the year, and be happy to answer any questions or take any ideas.
Well, if we, if we do spend the money, it probably ought to be on one-time things. You know, like the membership would be coming up again next year too, so.
Was there a price tag on the AI phone service?
Yeah, it's pretty flexible. I mean, based on the call volume at the Senior Center, it would probably run about 10,000, so we'd have to come up with, you know, obviously you don't have 10,000 left in commission contingency, but?
And that would be an ongoing expense?
That would be ongoing, like the membership is, Commissioner Shadwick pointed out, so.
I'm with Commissioner Shadwick. It needs to be a one-time.
What the, the iPads, I mean, I'm, this one works great. I have no problem with it. You said that they won't be able to be upgraded or receive new software or?
Aaron can probably help me out with that, but I believe it's maybe Commissioner Sparks and one other one that?
I believe it's Commissioner Hay and Commissioner Shadwick's iPads are so old that the software no longer updates. The problem with that is that as apps continue to come out and update, your iPads will stop working. Certain apps will just not work on there, they'll be too old. So the app will continue to update, but your software will not update. And once they get out of that compatibility range, the app will just not run on your iPad. You have to buy a new one. Apple is unfortunately very good at doing that, so it is, it's not if, it's when.
So we're also looking at a six-year, five to six-year expectancy? I mean, you know, that's, to me, something that we can get that's going to last, you know, that we don't have to worry about for the next four or five years, you know?
Is, any unspent money would just be carried over?
That would just go back to the general fund.
Okay. You can't just, because we chose not to have a deal, you can't just move this, keep this money in that type of fund and move it till next year?
Move it to the general fund, it just won't go into a contingency.
Yeah, that's what I was, okay.
Well, the software on the website seems also kind of critical, unless I misunderstood you. It seems like citizens can't access some things off the website that they might need. Is that, am I saying that right?
Yes, I mean, I will say, in terms of ADA compliance, this is a, an updated rule from the Department of Justice, and they said that websites for local governments with a population of 50,000 or more need to be fully compliant by April 24th of 26. But then they've recently come out with some updated guidance to that, that sort of, there's safe harbor provisions, and so our website is about 95% compliant as it is. So the number of things that we're talking about here is relatively small. And of course, we want everybody in the community to be able to access everything, right? Like, hands down. We have not had particular complaints about this issue. We have had complaints about phone system issue, which we're going to address separately. But this is, this is more of a, this would be nice to have. I don't think it's a compliance issue at this point.
You know, if you look at it, you said $2,500 for the iPads, $1,800 for this, for the, the software. That's only a difference of, with the, we got 4,100, or four, so actually about $260 difference. We can come up with $260.
Is the software, is that a one-time?
Yes, it would be one time to sort of go through and get everything compliant. And then there's a different piece of software that they already have that sort of scans for all the new things that are non-compliant, so.
Okay. I think you've got a motion.
Yep. Okay.
I'm not sure we need a motion. If everybody wants to spend on those two things, and we'll find the other 300 bucks and go from there, and?
That's fine.
Ironic, the county commissioners go over budget in 2025.
Trust me, you will not be going under, over budget. You, there are other items in your budget beyond the contingency that you've underspent this year, so.
Thank you.
So we do have the funds available. Okay, thank you. Next.
Next is executive session.
So if there are no other items, staff would request that the commission recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss applicants for the position of county administrator for 20 minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:06 a.m.
Do I have a motion?
So?
Second. We have a motion, a second, to go into executive session as decided. So we'll be back here in 20 minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries.
Okay, we're out of executive session. No action taken. We are back into regular session. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.